I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Cumberland School Committee on Thursday, March 24th, 2022 at 7:24 PM. I apologize for the late, the late start, but we had some other meetings before this one. So I call, oh, sorry. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. The next item on the agenda is approval of agenda. Motion by Mrs. Rogalski. Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it seven to zero. The next item on the agenda is the Student Government Student Activities Report.
Good evening, School Committee members. My name is Michael Shalino. I'm a senior here at Cumberland High School and the president of Student Government, and I'm here with Ryan Phalen, the freshman class vice president. Over the course of the last few months, Student Government has been working very hard to plan school events and help transition back to a normal school year. Most recently, we had our variety show on March 11th and 12th. This year's production was a huge success with lots of students, families, and faculty coming out to support the show. With a wide variety of acts ranging from music to comedy, it was a great event for the entire Cumberland community. Also, Student Government has three school dances planned for the rest of the school year. First, the freshman and sophomore classes are planning a spring fling dance on April 30th in the Wellness Center. The classes will sell tickets first to underclassmen and then open it up to juniors and seniors as a fundraiser for their classes. Second, the junior class is planning their junior prom at Crown Plaza on May 14th. And finally, the senior class's prom is scheduled for May 28th at Gillette Stadium. Students at CHS are definitely very happy to have school dances back and are looking forward to all these events over the next couple of months.
Over the past two weeks, Student Government has been collecting donations for Pennies for Patients throughout the school day to help children with childhood cancer. Each wing of the school has been paired to a team to compete for the most donations. Currently, the Foreign Language and English Department are leading the race with over $1,700 total. Students have not only been able to donate in their classes, but also by sharing an online link with their family and friends. At the beginning of this week, we totaled nearly $3,400 in donations and hope to reach our goal of $5,000 in our final count tomorrow. To draw more attention to Pennies for Patients, we have also organized a Spirit Week this week with Dress Up Days as well as a 10% Night in partnership with Angelo's Pizza. Student Government is very excited for all of the events that are planned for the rest of the school year. We will continue to work hard throughout the remainder of the school year to fundraise for charities, help those in need, and create a better, more enjoyable environment for the students of Cumberland High School. Thank you for your time. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, and I'd like to give a shout out to the advisors that are helping the Student Government, as well as Mrs. McFarland, Ms. Rowe, Mr. Danseiro, and Mr. Curran for the variety show. And I think Mackenzie's hair finally does not smell like ranch dressing anymore. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Approval of minutes from the regular meeting, March 10th, 2022. The Special Budget Meeting on March 10th, 2022. Approval of minutes from the Executive Session, March 10th, 2022. Motion by Mrs. Rogalski. Second by Mrs. Feather. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes seven to zero. The next item on the agenda is Personnel Announcements. Mrs. Dunkinson.
Good evening. A few items for tonight. First, I have an appointment effective March 21st, 2022, of Paula Soares Paraprofessional Community School. I have two retirements. First, Paula Vadenay's ELA at North Cumberland Middle School. She's retiring effective June 30th, 2022, after 25 years of service in Cumberland. And Deborah Doris Fernandez, paraprofessional at BF Norton, effective June 30th, 2022. She's retiring after 23 years of service to Cumberland. I congratulate them on their retirement and wish them well. I have five resignations for you tonight. All are currently on personal leave of absences. Kristen Cook, paraprofessional at Garvin. Kathleen Harold, paraprofessional at Cumberland High School. Cynthia Lancaster, school counselor at McCourt. Margaret Radcliffe, math interventionist at BF Norton. And Jamie Sutherland, kindergarten at Garvin. Finally, an unpaid leave of absence for the 2022-2023 school year of Julie Pascoe. She's grade three at Community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunkinson. Next on the agenda is Report Out of Executive Session Meeting on March 24th, 2022. Report Out of Executive Session Votes. We did not take any votes tonight. And the next item is the Vote to Seal the Minutes of the Executive Session. Motion by Mrs. Rogalski. Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it seven to zero. Next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Thornton.
Madam Chair, good evening. Our first item, we have some school sports achievements with our A.D., Martin Crowley.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry about that. Welcome, thank you for having us, School Committee members, Dr. Thornton, parents, and administrators. It was a great winter of athletics in the, in the school district, in both McCourt Middle School, as well as North Cumberland Middle School, and here at Cumberland High School. The fact that we started our season, we finished our season, was, was a great accomplishment to keep our athletics in some sense as normal as we could. Games were won, games were lost. More importantly, our student athletes learned life lessons, whether winning or losing, and they competed with a sense of purpose and camaraderie, what high school athletics is all about. Before we recognize our four individuals tonight, I'd also like to recognize, I emailed a lot of you the article about our swim team and Coach McGarry, that we are inclusion, including athletes with intellectual disabilities into our varsity sports. And Coach McGarry and Coach Fromont did it with these people, and Channel 10 came to a beautiful article on our swim team. And if you want to know what life is about, that's what it is right there through athletics. So a shout out to Coach McGarry and Fromont and the swim team as well. We do have four individuals who set school records, and we'd like to recognize them right now. Our first young lady was a four-year swimmer and a captain of our swim team, set the school record in the 100-meter backstroke this year. She'll be attending Ithaca College, Chelsea Friedland. And now we head to the track circuit. Our first individual set the 800-meter indoor record at the East Coast Invitational. Will be attending URI to run track, Ethan Carpenter. Our next individual set two records this winter. One in the 1500-meter at the Divisional Championship at the PCTA, and the other one in the 800-meter at the Nike Nationals two weeks ago. She will be returning to Cumberland High School next year. We're very excited about that. Grace Carr. And last but certainly not least, this young man will be attending Amherst College in the fall. Set the school record in the two-mile by finishing second at the New England Indoor Track Championships, and he won, excuse me, back up. Sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. He finished second in the two-mile at the New England Cross Country Championships, Indoor Championships at the Reggie Lewis Center up in Boston, earning all New England honors. And at the Nike Nationals, set the school record in the one-mile, making him an All-American, Henry Denon. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair. Next up, I think we may have a guest, but I'm not sure if I saw her. Is Sarah Ladue here this evening? Oh, please come on up. We have a brief PSA from Sarah for the, the community.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sarah Ladue, and I'm part of the graduating class of 2021 here at Cumberland High School. I attend Quinnipiac University as a biomedical science major with a minor in microbiology and immunology and a pre-med designation. Did you know that April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month? Last April, I piloted a fundraiser for Day One, the Rhode Island Rape Crisis Center, and with the help of the community, I raised $7,000 to be put towards programs, therapy, and resources for survivors of sexual assault in Rhode Island. To those who donated to my fundraiser, I first want to say thank you to helping to make Rhode Island a better place for everyone. This April, I'm hoping to raise even more money and reach even more Rhode Islanders with this year's fundraiser. I'll be accepting donations via GoFundMe for the entirety of April. 100% of the proceeds will go directly to Day One. This money will be used for different programs, therapies, resources, and supplies for survivors of sexual assault. This is such a crucial cause, as Day One is a nonprofit organization, so it relies solely on the help of the community. On Friday, April 8th, the Cumberland School District will be hosting a district-wide dress-down day for all teachers, staff, and faculty. It costs $5 to participate, and 100% of the proceeds will be donated to Day One. Your principal will be sending out a flyer with my contact information and the GoFundMe link. Please feel free to contact me with any questions or concerns. Once again, just please don't feel obligated to donate to this fundraiser, and perhaps an even more important step would be sharing the link and passing on Day One's resources, because you never know who may need them. Some of the many resources that Day One has to offer are therapy, workshops, trauma-based yoga, educational classes, hotlines, law enforcement advocacy, and so much more. The number to reach Day One is 401-421-4100. Thank you for your time, and please contact me with any questions.
Sarah, thank you for that. So, Madam Chair, next up, we have a topic we'll be talking about for the next several meetings, and I have been talking to some parents, and to give everyone some context, I wanted to back off for a second to kind of do a reset as far as talking about boundaries and things like that. So as you all know, in the community, a couple of years back, we voted on a bond, and from that bond set forth a whole processes of school construction, and from that, the potential to shift some boundaries, if you will. So, you know, as you know now, Cumberland Hill is being, being worked on, and we're kind of starting that process. So it's not something that we just, you know, started doing this fall. This is a very purposeful process that started with the vote, so I just wanted to kind of mention that. In terms of what might, myself and my admin team recommend to you, to us really, we're following the school community policy. There's a policy called J-18, and it talks about effective use of school facilities. We have to do our best to be efficient and effective. So knowing that, we try to recommend to you what we think makes sense. Knowing that, it's not an easy conversation. There are a lot of variables here. There's busing, historical boundaries, you know, budgets, school sizes, all of these things swirl together that kind of make this kind of a complex process. So I just wanted to mention that. Looking back, going into it tonight again, we really want to look first at the Cumberland Hill area. As you know, last meeting, we had a general map on the wall. This time in your places, we also gave you a list of streets that would encompass all of what we think could be Cumberland Hill next year. And we'll publish these screenshots tomorrow, if you will, on, on the website, but for the folks at home, you can see the streets there. Those streets would represent all of what we, we think could be Cumberland Hill next year. And as I mentioned last week, the differences would be Route 99 had some historical students out there who went to Community, and they'd be recommended to go to Cumberland Hill. Also, Highland Park is an area that we would recommend those few students, they would come down to Cumberland Hill. And Navigant Bank over by the corner of Nate Whipple, it's that Navigant Bank. So all in, I want to say, Mike, approximately 36 students is what we're looking at. So that number can move, as you can imagine, as people come and go. We actually have a map and shows you, you know, live, you know, who's in the area. So that's what we're recommending. Once again, for Cumberland Hill, not looking for a vote tonight. We want to be purposeful, take our time, you know, talk through this, have the community weigh in, ask questions. But with Cumberland Hill, that's the change. Now, I know someone asked me today on the phone, so if you're building a new wing, why can't you add more than just 30-something students? The reason is, in this construction plan that was approved a couple of years ago, some of the rooms being built are special education rooms, some of them are open classroom-type rooms. It's not a net gain of eight classrooms. So 36 seems to be a, a good number to capture, to kind of, you know, tweak the boundary of Cumberland Hill. So I can certainly stop there, and we can have a Cumberland Hill discussion, and then I can go on to my next piece, which is the middle school discussion. So any questions on Cumberland Hill?
Yes, I do, actually. So back in the last time we did this, 2013, 2012, I can't remember the year, I live on Sunnyside Drive. My kids were going to Cumberland Hill, and then they were redistricted to Community. Sunnyside Drive is now back on the list for, to go to Cumberland Hill. And I, I guess I'm now a little kind of befuddled about why we ever left Community, and why we ever left Cumberland Hill to go to Community when we're clearly closer to Cumberland Hill.
Right. First thing I'd say is, people will often tell me, I can see the school right there. I'm so close to it, why can't I go to it? It's not as simple as taking like a protractor and drawing a circle around a school. A lot of it is really a function of bus routes and how buses can, you know, pick up students and, you know, how that, how that works out. So it sometimes can seem illogical or just, you know, nonsensical where they're, they're closer to school A than school B. But if you look at the map, for example, look at the red, that's Community. If you want to change Community's boundary, you can't take from the left, the top, or the right, right? It has to come from the bottom. So in some shape or form, you have to affect the bottom boundary of Community. So it may be, you're right, that you'd be closer to one than the other, but still, from a bus routing perspective, it would make more sense to have them go to the other school. That's kind of how we look at it. In all these conversations we have, we talked with Durham, too. In this case, though, if you think of Navigant, for example, those students can walk to Cumberland Hill, but they were currently being bused to Community. So that's why that one was, I think, a, a no-brainer for us to, to look at. Also, it's capacity of schools, and I can't recall 2013, I was here, but I can't recall the capacity of Cumberland Hill back then or Community. But I know right now, Community's around 650, and the goal at the end of this is to maybe get Community around 500. If we can get 35 or 40 to Cumberland Hill, when Ashton gains a new wing, maybe another, you know, 110 there, then your community comes down. I'd also add, we're also mindful of housing starts in Cumberland. And if they're building more apartments in certain parts of town, or more new housing starts in the northern part of the town, how will that impact what we do? The last thing they want to do is do the school construction and then not be aware of the housing starts and/or apartments coming online that could offset our numbers again.
I will also add that my son, who at the time was going into fifth grade, so he spent, whatever, first through fourth at Cumberland Hill, and then fifth at Community, and then went to NCMS, he's home right now from spring break from University of Maryland as a sophomore. And I asked him about this. I said, so Dan, what was that like for you, moving? And he said, I actually really liked it, because when I got to middle school, I knew so many more kids, the kids from Cumberland Hill and the kids from Community. And he said, that was a good move for him, all these years later. So I just thought that was interesting.
Yeah. Any other questions on Cumberland Hill? Oh, also, Madam Chair, one more thing. Back in 2013, that was when we did Full Day K, and that was a major variable that made us shift these boundaries. That was a big one.
Mr. Monica?
Dr. Thornton, do we know what the housing starts are? Housing starts are going to happen up in this end of town?
We're getting a lot of data from the town within 30 days on that type of thing. So I talked to Town Hall, we're going to get some more info on what we're looking at. I could have, I have that at the meeting after next. Other Cumberland Hill questions? Once again, not looking for a vote tonight. I think if you could just, you know, certainly talk to folks, and I'm talking to parents as they call me, and get more feedback on what they, they think of the Cumberland Hill conversation, you know?
And, Dr. Thornton, this would be for fall of 2022?
Yes. Later on tonight, I'm going to share with you a sheet. I know one of the points of confusion also is, with all this construction, which one is what year? So I'll take you through it in a, in a little bit. Cumberland Hill is being worked on this year, finished this summer. Next fall, this would be the renovated Cumberland Hill back online. They're our first school back online.
Mr. Fiorilla?
I don't believe you were here when we were having this discussion, Dr. Thornton, but there was talk that when we did redistrict, that we would try to build in some, what we, what we were calling at the time, gray areas. So that as population shifted, those gray areas could easily go from one school to the next as need arose, not breaking up families, of course. Has any consideration been put into that sort of a dynamic?
I think right now, we are looking at that, especially with Ashton, with a new wing coming online, where if we're adding a new K, a new one, a new two, et cetera, we don't want to load those up to the max of, say, you know, 24 in a room. We want to have a little more flexibility in that. So as far as pulling from Ashton, which is a later conversation, pulling from Community to Ashton, we wouldn't want to max them out, if you will. Once again, with this model of Cumberland Hill, and talking to the principal, De'Malcolm, she had said she could probably go to the high end of absorbing 72 students, that was her number. So we're at 36 right now, so we are building it a little bit. And also, keep in mind, in Rhode Island, most towns are losing students across Rhode Island. We were one of only a couple districts that gained students. We gained, I think, 52 students from last year, so that's unusual. If that continues, that's also part of your gray area conversation, and we have to build in some capacity for that.
Well, to that point, the state's been telling us that we were going to have a drop in enrollment for the last, well, 12 years, and that's just never happened. We've always gained more and more students, specifically because of the construction going on in town in different parts, like, and I'm assuming that when you mentioned Highland, Highland Park, we're talking about the condo development that they put in a few years ago into an industrial park.
Yes. So once again, I would, Madam Chair, I would think within the next month, I'd recommend that you, you do consider voting on Cumberland Hill? Maybe not the next meeting, but the meeting after, because we really want to give people, you know, notice if we're making a change like this for the fall. And also, in terms of Durham, Madam Chair, we do have a drop dead date for them, to really have them do a good model for us, whatever we do next year. They're looking at April 28th as kind of the time they need to know what we think we want to do. So that'd be really ideal if we could have the Cumberland Hill decision before end of April. That would be ideal.
And you mentioned that these would be put on the website tomorrow?
Yeah, tomorrow, we're going to put up the street list for Cumberland Hill, as you have your places, and we'll give them a copy of that screenshot right there. You can see it up on the screen there, and it has kind of a great, I'm kind of colorblind, but a lighter color than green, where it's the proposed increase to Cumberland Hill. Mike, what color do you call that? Light green. So green next to the light green is the proposed area. Tomorrow, they'll be on the website. And once again, if parents want to call me and talk to me, my cell phone is 401-996-4247. They call me, and we can talk about, you know, Cumberland Hill.
Is it, is it possible, not for tomorrow, but as we continue to talk about this, to get street maps that have some street names on them? So we can get some sense of where we are?
So you want to take this map and put it on like a Google map?
Well, yeah, I don't have Cumberland memorized, so I don't, I can't, I don't really, I'm not good at navigating streets without street names.
Well, to that, Madam Chair, to that, I would say we can look at that with the tech department, and Mr. Chandler's nodding, so the answer is yes.
Okay. Thank you. Yep, Mr. Feather.
Just in, by way of helping that along a little bit, we do, Cumberland does have a really great ArcGIS site, so it's that map geo, something like that, really, really excellent for that, so I can send that to you guys.
Thank you. Dr. Thornton, have you started speaking with any of these parents with the Cumberland Hill yet, in these proposed routes?
I have not received any feedback from Cumberland Hill. I have been talking to parents from the Community Ashton conversation and the middle school conversation. I haven't spoke to any parents yet that I can recall from Cumberland Hill.
Okay, and then as, as far as that goes, the 36 students, are, are we looking at some of them that are just finishing their years at Community, or are we going to transition a few of those slowly?
I'd have to look back and see what grade they are. On the other map, which we don't show publicly, we actually have the gray level where they reside, but I'd have to look back, give you a count. I don't have the count in front of me as far as how many third graders, how many fourth graders, fifth graders.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other Cumberland Hill questions? All right. So last time I gave you four conversations, and when I could do them all again tonight, I wanted to do the middle school conversation next, right? Because that's been, I think, on everyone's minds, I want to talk about that if I could. So I know, to have the conversation, if I could invite up both middle school principals with the microphone, they're going to sit at the small table and kind of help me tell this, this piece. So I'll give them one second to go up. Yeah, Dr. Mattson and Ms. Coughlin. So I can start while they're getting situated. As you know, with the elementary schools' conversation of borders, we talk about the Cumberland Hill, why we just did that one. Couple years away, we have the Garvin one. We talk about Meadow Crest shifting up to Garvin, around 35, 40 kids from BF. And then we also talk about, in the third year, Ashton gaining a whole new wing, empty space, right? And the preschool also vacates and comes here, so it's many vacant rooms. So we take a good number from Community to get it down from 650, take at least like 110, let's say, and bring them down to Ashton. So with that, the next question is, what happened at the middle school level, right? And the current middle school map, right up there, you can see it, the dark purple, I can see dark purple, Mike, that is North Cumberland right now. And the lighter purple, that is McCourt, and you can see part of McCourt kind of bulges above 295, and then to the right of that is kind of a, I'll call that gray. And on the right is Bear Hill, and we're potentially looking at that going south. I'll explain that in a second. And to the left is the other potential shift. That's where we are right now over on Mendon Road, that's the conversation. So to frame this view, and I'll give to the principals, right now, we have a situation where one middle school has 205 kids more than the other, and they both have the same number of teams. So that means one is, North has a class size of the mid-20s, kind of right at the contractual limit, and McCourt's around 18-ish. So that presents challenges. So that's why in the last meeting, I told you, if we can give some relief to North, I said last meeting, 26 students, we can still operationalize North. I have more updates on that in a second, I'll have Beth talk to you about that. But that's kind of the, the discussion right now. First, short-term on this screen, can I give relief for North next year of 20-something students? Because as you remember from last week, I told you, 96% currently of Garvin and Ashton go to McCourt right now. The last 4% represent those 26. If I could bring them down, it would give some relief to North. Before I keep talking, I want to let the two principals just give you a little sense of where they are right now as far as size and things that they're currently dealing with. Let's start with North Cumberland Middle School.
Good evening. Am I on now?
Good evening. Yeah, so when we, when we start looking at enrollment for the, for the next school year, we start this process in January, what we look at are the current fifth graders who are enrolled in the district, where they live now, and where their address would send them, given the, given the current boundaries. In, in my estimate, I look, I had 208 students coming my way, just with the students who are enrolled in fifth grade. That gives me class sizes of 26 per class before, this is based on January numbers. I then have to take into account the fact that we have two district programs, specialized programs. One is the STRIVE program, and those students come from all over the district, they are scheduled to be at North Cumberland Middle School, and they're integrated and included in the regular classroom. So they are additional students who may come from, from a McCourt districted address to North Cumberland Middle School. So we have to take those students into account. We also have the District ICANN program, who also come to North, North Cumberland Middle School from, throughout the district. They're in a self-contained program, but I have to account for those students in the art, music, other special, special classes, PE. those students in the art, music, other special, special classes, PE. And then, I have to look at historical data in terms of registrations over the course of the summer. I typically have a number of students who come from BVP to North Cumberland Middle School, that's one feed in, and also students who move in. So when all is said and done, I'm looking at a number of somewhere around 225 coming into next year that I need to prepare for. Right away, contractually, 227 per class is a total of 216, so I know I'm over. And, and that's where the conversation with Dr. Thornton began. As we were discussing how we can address this, there are two ways we can look at this. The first is to bring in a ninth section into North Cumberland. The downside of-
Can you explain what a section is, Ms. Coughlin?
Absolutely. A ninth teacher in, to, to, because now I would have more, I have more than the contractual 27 students, so I have to open another classroom, and that would be the ninth teacher, that ninth, sixth grade teacher. What's nice about having two teams, and the reason we hired a few years ago to round out McCourt's two teams, is because we can now have teachers teach specialized content areas. And that's where really the, the focus has been at the middle school, making sure every teacher, a sixth grade teacher is elementary certified, they can teach anything. But what we're doing is, is treating them as highly qualified content-specific teachers, and that's how we're training them. If I bring in a ninth section, everyone's going to have to teach a separate content area outside of what they're, what they're trained to teach. A math teacher would teach three, three sections of math and another section of social studies, you know, and so forth. So not ideal from a student learning perspective, and really not the direction that we need to go in, or we want to go in, in terms of professional development and our growth of, of our, of our teachers. So, so the other option that we discussed was, because, and as we, 4% of my students come from, or 5% of my students come from Garvin and Ashton, would it make more sense to have those schools be feeder schools from McCourt, and then have Cumberland Hill and community be feeder schools for North Cumberland Middle School? That would allow us to grow both schools, as Dr. Thornton mentioned, McCourt Middle School has the same number of teachers as North Cumberland Middle School, 200 more students. I have 200 more students at North Cumberland Middle School, that's a whole grade level. So North Cumberland Middle School is always packed from the get-go. This allows some balance between the two schools, and it also allows flexibility, because if we choose to keep boundaries as is, we would then have to take new registrations, and they would not be able to be placed in their neighborhood school, they would have to be placed from McCourt. That's, that's been a solution, a last-minute solution, if we've had large number of registrations that we've had to resort to, not ideal as well. So that's a little bit of a background as to how, how my numbers have ballooned over the, over the last few years. And, and we're trying to think of a long-term strategy to provide some balance and some flexibility between the two schools. A very crowded school leads to very little flexibility in terms of shifting kids around, moving, moving different opportunities. We're very limited in what we're able to do schedule-wise if we're starting out fall.
Thank you, and Dr. Masterson?
Thank you. So I just, as Mrs. Coughlin shared some of the demographics of North Cumberland, I thought I would share some of ours. Similar to North Cumberland, we also have district-wide programs, so we do share in those areas of need. We may not have the numbers in those programs that North Cumberland does, but definitely we have the services available for those students. So we have the Alternative Learning Program that is district-wide, which has North Cumberland Middle School students in it each year. We collaborate on how we can best meet the needs of those students with Dr. Santa, who is seated behind me. We also have the District-wide ELL program, and I know that the committee is aware of the ELL program that we have at our school, but for the betterment of the discussion for all members of the community who are here in the interest of their students and their children. The ELL program has a larger number, which is considered a subgroup by the Department of Education. And that subgroup, we have not, as a district, been able to support them to the level that is necessary because of the amount of students. So we have just, in the last two years, under the direction of Mr. Demana, been able to get the staffing necessary to help those students. They have not grown at the level that they should have grown, based on ride standards. So because of that, our school is considered a two-star school, and mainly because of that subgroup of students. If we did not have a subgroup of students that were at that level of enrollment, we would be a solid three-star school, because if you could look at the report card, it shows that we are a three-star school. And if you look at North Cumberland's students' school, they're a five-star school, we would be a three-star school, Cumberland High School is a four-star school. If you average the two middle schools together, that's what you get, what you get the high school. That is the story of Cumberland. We also have, at McCourt routinely, since 2017, 18, had five to 10 families from North Cumberland Middle School request to come to McCourt, and they've been approved by the Superintendent's Office and have driven themselves for three years. So there, there are North Cumberland families who choose to come to McCourt. You also approved a student this year to come to McCourt from another city, so we have a private pay student at McCourt Middle School this year. I guess what I'm trying to tell you is that McCourt Middle School is still a school of choice. We have teachers that work extremely hard with our students, and we have grown. Since I've been the principal of that school, our performance has almost doubled pre-pandemic, and we took the same hit that every other school took in this state for 10 to 15%. And I'll be talking to our staff on April faculty meeting, and our goal is in the next three years to get back to that standard, which would be the highest standard that that school's performed at since that school opened. So I just wanted to tell the story really quick about our school and demographics. Mrs. Coughlin brought up a situation where if they had to add another section, North Cumberland, that they would have teachers teaching, how you said it, out of, out of, out of their content area. I've been around this district for 18 years, I've been an administrator for 14. I'm aware of how the budget cycles work in this district more than some people. I know in the next two years, we're gonna have significant budget decisions have to be made. In the event that this enrollment model continues, as we are currently, I know for a fact that there'll be cuts at McCourt Middle School with faculty and staff that will force our teachers to teach multiple subjects, which will do nothing to help us to close a learning gap, because they cannot specialize in the curriculum that Mrs. Coughlin just spoke about, that they're, they're trying to achieve in North Cumberland. So unfortunately, we're at a place, where, a place where there's gonna have to be a choice to be made. Ultimately, our staff will always rise to the occasion if they have to, but in the end, we want the same things between the two schools.
So question first for Ms. Coughlin. So Ms. Coughlin, we talked last meeting about potentially, you know, trying to find some students to give you a little relief to not hire that extra teacher, because as we know, if we have space at McCourt, we wouldn't want to add an unbudgeted teacher at North Cumberland Middle School. But where do you find those students, right? And last meeting, we told you, on the right, in the gray, Bear Hill, that was under 10 students in that area, and on the left, where we are right now, 122, that's another approximately 16 students. There were like, say, under 10 below Cumberland House of Pizza, a space, another 10 above the high school area, which is really close to North Cumberland Middle School. So tell me again, if you could, we talked earlier today, what number would you feel comfortable getting relief from to not hire that extra teacher right now? A number's changing every day, but right now, what do you think you need?
Well, I, I I think that it is on, okay, thank you. There we go. So we, we did have that conversation, but it, but it's, I, I work so close to the limit, and number-wise, that it's very hard to give you an exact number. I will tell you, if we decide to do a, if we decide, the 26 that we originally came up with, where we have two feeder schools, does give me the flexibility and comfortably receive new registrations over the course of the summer. If we decide to reduce that and go with a lower number this year, I certainly, I can accommodate it, accommodate that number, but we would have to make decisions on a case-by-case basis as new resignation, registrations would, would come our way. So that would be the decision. So if we decided to do the, I, I believe it was more of 18, was it 18? That was the lower number?
If you went just below House of Pizza in Bear Hill, it's around 16.
It's around 16. So that would be the decision, if that's the decision of the pleasure of the committee to do that lower number, to keep a, a smaller, you know, a, a smaller area to, to switch to McCourt Middle School, we could accommodate that number, but then we would have to address new registrations as they came along, because right now, that would bring the upwards, closer to the, the 216, 220 mark, which is full classes.
I guess, Madam Chair, what I would look for, what would be helpful to me, is if a few members of the school committee would be interested in being called like a working group, to really look at this more detail, myself, Mr. Chandler, look at the numbers where they reside, that'd be helpful to me to get more feedback from you, so I could come back to the next meeting with those two folks, you know, who have that input, that'd be great, as far as the short-term Middle School Conversation and the long-term one. So I don't know if we could, that's something we could look, look to do.
Definitely, we can look at that. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Dr. Thornton, Ms. Coughlin, and Dr. Masterson. I mean, it's evident that redistricting has to happen in sub-capacity, we just can't sustain these numbers. But the question is, when and where it happens? So, you know, you hear from people in the community, and some people, you know, they want school choice, it's just not, no matter what's decided, I told somebody today, no matter what is what decided, somebody will be upset, some family upset, because quite frankly, they look at things through the lens of their child and how it affects them personally, whereas we have to do what's best for the district, the, the schools and capacity, so we have to look at things big picture. But I wonder, the most compelling argument you have, I think, for the parents who are concerned about the redistricting, really comes down to, you know, they, they can talk about school and property values and all that other stuff, and I, you know, I, I would be happy to send my children to either middle school. But it really comes down to travel distance. So, you know, I talked to, you know, some people are, would be in that areas of the left, over near, just past, I think, Lip Estates, that Ashton area, over towards Mendon Road.
What color are we talking about?
Uh, blue, that'd be that powder blue, and I wish-
Oh, that is, we are right here, that's us right here.
Yeah, so those people, you know, you can see, especially in the upper right-hand corner, that blue, they're a mile, a mile and a half from NCMS, and all of a sudden, they're gonna be five and a half miles from McCourt. So they have the most compelling argument. So I wonder if, when we look at this, and it's, it's nice and clean, I know, your middle school goes to this school, but we also have a history of doing things differently. You know, you talk to parents who, who went to one school and didn't go to another or what have you, and they never had a problem, and, you know, we're kind of reinventing the wheel, so. And there's also, I'm not gonna even address the north-south, you know, Mason Dixon line there. But when you, they have a compelling argument, I think we have to consider if we're gonna kind of reevaluate this, because quite, quite frankly, if you're a mile and a half from NCMS-
Right.
And you're five miles from McCourt, that's your strongest argument. And conversely, if you look down, down to your house, that, that area, the bottom right, right there, sorry, Mike, I just want to rub your little head over there for good luck. They're so close to McCourt, yet they're gonna be going, they're at MC, at NCMS, so, you know, whatever we decide, I think we just have to-
Right. Here's the challenge, though, I would say, no matter how you take it from the bottom, someone's gonna have that mileage argument, because you can't go from the northern part of the border. But as far as the gray on the left right now, why that's currently an idea, that's a bus route that can go and pick up and go to McCourt. It is longer, you're right, but wherever you go, whether it's there or to the right where the purple is, where it's, it's currently purple, if you took that group, that's like 50 kids, by the way, in that group, on the, on the right, lower purple, is 50. Wherever you go, they're gonna have that argument, I think.
I would agree with Mr. Collins on this. Looking at the, the other side of 295 off of Mendon Road and behind Chops, as, as we've been talking about, that is a high traffic. We already have issues because of the high school and, and traffic going up to that high school. Then we're gonna back it right away with middle school children who are gonna be picked up very close to the time that other high school students are gonna be dropped off, in order to make it through a high-volume, high-traffic area down. Now, I, I don't represent that district, nor do I represent the next district I'm going to talk to, but I live in the other one, and that is the Bear Hill Road. The Bear Hill Road should have always stayed with Garvin and with McCourt. The lower Bear Hill always had at one time, going to community, going to North, but we should be looking now at not this border of 295, like it continues to be talked about, but we, we look, and, and we have Shirley Drive and Fair Haven and the beginning of Little Palm County, these are areas that are going to community now, that we maybe cannot support going to Ashton, but we absolutely should be looking at them, because they're going to be under that two-mile to get to McCourt. It's a straight road down, and the Bear Hill and the lower Abbott Run Valley area in that side of 295, that's a drive down Heinz Road.
Mike, can you highlight Shirley for us in that area?
Yeah, so Shirley Drive is gonna be right, if you look right where, the pink is touching with the purple, right at the 295 pass, it's going to come up into that small neighborhood behind it. And so there's a lot there that, that we need to, to, to look at. That whole neighborhood there is a big neighborhood, and they can take more students, even if they're at community, but to say, we'll take Garvin and we'll take Ashton, then we have BF Norton and put them all at McCourt, doesn't work when we have to look at the distances and times for these children on the bus. And right now, we have a lot of those concerns already happening with some of the schools, so why not start this at the elementary and look at it through that lens before we start to move them around from the middle schools?
I guess I'm with you on the long-term conversation, on the short-term, for the committee this spring, what do we do with, with North Cumberland Middle? They're too big to operate. We have to, that Shirley Drive conversation you're saying?
I'm, I'm saying we need to look at something else, taking them through a high-volume, high-traffic area where they're near the high school and closer to North Cumberland does not make sense, even though they go to Ashton. So we cannot just say, we're going to take the Ashton students and move them here. I, I think that we have to look at those elementary schools to say, we need to look at the roads, and where the roads fit when it comes to the middle school. And that may be a mixture of students, where some from Ashton and some from community go down to McCourt. But that's okay, then that's a mixture of five different schools, and isn't that the melting pot we want?
Mrs. Feather, and then Mr. Collins?
I was, I was going to make a, a similar proposal, actually, to Ms. Smith. I was hoping, am I allowed to go over to the map? Thank you. Thank you. Yes, hello. Ooh, this is so much fun. Okay. So I was looking a lot at this myself as well, and one of the things I was, you know, and actually, I just wanted to kind of put it out there, just so that everyone could see it as well. So this, right here, is kind of the air, ooh, God, sorry. I didn't realize it was a touchscreen, sorry. Okay, I won't touch it. So this right here is kind of like that line where you get, like, see, that's, that's the, the road that goes down Ventry, I think it is, that goes down to Albion. This is the Chops area, so I think that we're saying there's a good chunk of kids in this area, and I know this because I actually live there.
Actually, we're around eight to 10.
Really? In, in the, in the apartments? There were 30 kids in the apartments last time we checked? Oh, fifth grade, oh, sorry.
Fifth grade.
Okay. Well, I was thinking we'd get a good chunk of kids, because I'm like, my kid would go. And then I was thinking that similarly, we just take that chunk as well.
That, that chunk we looked at today, that has a bigger number. Mike, was that in the-
The big, big number? So maybe like this chunk?
That was in the 30s, I believe, at least.
Okay. Because I'm just thinking, it's the same thing as Ms. Smith mentioned, with the traffic at the high school coming down, they're, they're not even gonna be able to get there. But I was thinking with the back roads here, since they're all connected via Diamond Hill and Heinz, that that might be a potential. So that's my idea.
Mr. Collins, and then Mr. Rogowski?
I have to agree with Ms. Feather in some regards, some of the optics. So if you look at what we're, we're hoping to repair or change, it's weird to look at, and it almost makes you wonder how we arrived at decisions for these neighborhoods. Like, if you come down Heinz Road, it like, it almost like stops at driveways, so it almost looks like, I don't know what the dynamic was, but it, you know, it's reminiscent of one of those historical, like, gerrymandering maps, you know, where it's like, you know, and, but it's like, when you have a clean, like, some people have talked about a line of delineation, whether it's Bear Hill or 295, but this is all over the place, and it's stopping in odd spots, and maybe it had to do with enrollment at the time. odd spots, and maybe it had to do with enrollment at the time, I don't know, but--
Bussing.
Bussing, yeah.
So, the fact of the matter is that redistricting is going to have to happen. The other fact of the matter is that it sucks, because some families will be happy, some families will not, but it has to happen and people have to move. It is my district that I feel should go to McCourt. I feel, looking at the map, that it makes no logistical sense to send kids from this area down Mendon, across 295, or across Angel, down Diamond Hill. It simply doesn't make any sense. The bus rides are going to be horribly long for students, and you're talking about sixth graders, seventh graders, eighth graders. You want to talk about increased incidence of bullying on a bus? Extra time added for that, just a random thought. Dr. Masterson would know more about that with his bullying. But it's, logistically, it just doesn't make any sense. I would really strongly urge, you know, looking closer to 295 on that side, yeah, you know, down by the Patacic Credit Union--
On the, on the right?
Yes. Yeah, sorry, on the, sorry, I forget, you don't live here. To the left blue, the left, yeah, blue, the bottom part of it, right above 295, that would make some sense, because the right there is an easy hop on the highway. And I know we're talking about bus routes, but we also know that half the buses are empty right now, and bus routes can be reworked. So I would just, I would just really encourage a little further north in my district and a little further south from that line there, just to get it lower.
I guess what I would say is, if we can, like I said, get a few brave volunteers, we can actually show you the numbers and come back next meeting with some more detail on that.
I actually, Dr. Thornton, have considered that, and I have approached two members on the committee, our two at-large school committee members, about becoming part of a working group, so we can, you know, we can work to make that happen. But I think there's a lot of good ideas, but I think there's a lot of details that not everyone fully understands, and we need to brainstorm that. I think, I know we have the immediate need for Cumberland Hill for the fall and some adjustment for McCourt in the fall of this year. The other changes that we're talking about are longer-term changes, so we do have more time to fully look at that, look at the bussing, look at all the other components of this so that we can make sure that we're making, you know, the best decisions that we can make that can meet the, all the variety of needs that we have. So I think that is a good idea, and we can move forward with that.
Ms. Smith?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, earlier I said Shirley Drive, too, and it's just because I grew up in this area. I did mean Broadview Acres. There are two buses that go right now to the middle school. One picks up on one side of Shirley Drive, the other picks up on the other side of Shirley Drive, and both buses have 24 or 23 students on it. So to pick up Broadview is, and add that into that run to McCourt, or those runs that are already happening to McCourt, and I do know this because I'm there every day for those buses, I try to drive the backroads now, and it's in there, and I looked at that as an issue when we first did the Durham runs, but it's, Broadview is very close to that as well, so it's just, I apologize for saying Shirley Drive, and just wanted to say that the bussing can work there.
Madam Chair, I guess I'd love to bring this back again next meeting and have more discussions on these two topics.
Mr. Collins?
I'm sorry, this was raised, and Dr. Santis here, and I'm sorry, is there any, when it comes to redistricting, is there any scenario, and I already know the answer, but other people may have the answer, regarding if you, I was wondering if Dr. Santa might be able to address, I hate to put you in the smut, but what I had emailed you about regarding special ed requirements. You had mentioned the Strive program at NCMS, but, you know, some people have unique, and I never want to give a specific answer, but there are unique situations, Strive being an example, where redistricting won't affect them. So could you just briefly speak to that about, so some parents might be watching or in attendance who may have a unique special ed requirement?
So, any of the specialized programs in the district, there are some in every single building. If the IP team has determined that that is where their services, that really their menu of services can be provided, then it doesn't go through the typical process, they're put on a master specialized list, and they are enrolled in those schools, and it's all done through the Assistant Superintendent's Office. So that would count, that's Strive, ICAN, ALP programs, all of those, success, all those. I think the question you might be asking is if a student has been at a particular school and the parents want them to stay there, what I would say is I'd be very cautious about approving, randomly approving some of those cases. If there's a, if the family really feels it's going to be a detriment to that child, it should come to the IP team, and I would recommend that the IP team determine whether or not. That is a realistic concern, because there are some kids that have significant transition issues. Sometimes it just has to do with what grade level they are, we may not want them to transition and then have to transition again, let's say a fourth grader, fifth grader, and then next year they're going into middle school. But all those cases really should go through the IP teams, and then every family has the right, just like every other student, to appeal to the superintendent to request disdain of a particular school and go through that particular process. I'd just be really cautious of randomly approving this family or that family. It really needs to go through a process. It will cause numbers for me, too, it will cause a number of issues for myself, because all of our schools provide resources for it, and most of those students that you're talking about would be resource students, and I might now have a misalignment of those students, too. Does that make sense? Okay.
Okay, then, Madam Chair, I will move along if there are no other questions for this piece tonight. Our next topic is also construction-related. With construction come other variables and challenges, but we have a challenge, and we, I think we have a solution. Once again, not a vote tonight, just a discussion. It's around elementary start times. So this year Cumberland Hill is living up here with us at the trans area, and that bus situation is pretty straightforward from Cumberland Hill down to here. Next year Garvin would come up here, and that's a longer transport for all the Garvin kids to come to the trans. If we do nothing and just run the regular system, we have to add three more buses unbudgeted around, Mr. Pignano, how much are three buses? So 90,000 times three. But we have a solution. If we do a one-year shift in some of the times, it's budget-neutral per Durham. So tonight for discussion only, and tomorrow we'll have it on the website for folks to look at, this could be potentially a solution to have a budget-neutral one-year for start times. On the board, you see the whole sheet, and Mike, if you put the camera on that, Mike, if you could, on the, on the sheet. So essentially, I won't read the whole sheet across, but Ashton's the first category in the upper left, and they currently drop off at 8:45, we'd have them drop off at 8:15. So essentially, their day currently starts at nine, proposed, they'd start at 8:30 in this model. BF Norton currently starts the day at 8:30, they'd start at 9:15 in this model. Community currently starts the day at nine, they'd start at 8:30. Garvin, I'm sorry, Cumberland Hill currently starts at nine, they start at 9:15, and Garvin currently starts at 8:30, they'd start at 9:15. So 9:15 is the late, are the late elementary schools. Middles would not change, high school would not change. I know the high school folks would love to have a later high school start time, it's the holy grail. Last time I looked at it, it was a 10-bus add, but that's not the conversation here, it's more about not adding buses for school construction. So that's for your discussion tonight, and I'd like to, if you could vote on this, once again, you know, before April runs out, that give the bus company a chance to, you know, finalize the plans. But that's the current thinking, to be budget-neutral. Happy to hear your thinking on this.
I just, I have no personal problems with the proposed start times. I think it's a really kind of ingenious way to stay budget-neutral in a time where we don't have the funds to add three buses. And I just want to say, if we do this now, it gives parents five months to figure out their transportation strategies, so hopefully that would be more than enough time if the changes were to pass.
If I have no other questions, I'll bring that back again next meeting for potential discussion, maybe action, if we want to bring that back, we'll see. My last item tonight under school construction, I think sometimes folks get confused, and it's easy to get confused, on all the construction and what's happening in what year. So we made a chart, Mike, show the chart, please. We'll have this once again tomorrow in my message on the website. It shows you each building, when it's being worked on and when it's done. So if you look on the upper right, I'm sorry, up top, going left to right, first school, Cumberland Hill, as you can see, in this year, 2021, 22, it's being, there's building construction happening. The same year, it's really interior renovations, there's no like addition like Ashton, it's the same year, right? We're doing the work this year. The students are at our building at the high school this year, Cumberland Hill, and next year they are back and they are done, right? That's Cumberland Hill. Next school, Garvin, they next year have building construction. It's entirely done inside with no real major change, only one footprint change on the far side, so it's really all done next year. They come up here next year and live with us at the trans building, and they're done in '23, '24. BF Norton is the third group to come up here and live at the trans building. You can see that right down the line, same conversation, it's all done in one year, but that's a major job inside. The last two are a little different. Ashton, you can see, they have a couple years of work. Next year at Ashton, they build the addition. The following year, they, I'm sorry, next year is the addition, right, and Ashton stays there. The following year, they come up here and we work on the inside of Ashton. So then in the third year, '25, '26, Ashton is done. That's the year you would consider adding population to Ashton from Community. And the last school, Community, you can see, we're building, this is done over two summers. This summer, it's the new cafeteria, it's a large footprint. The following summer, it's work inside the building. Community never comes up here, we couldn't fit 650 students in the trans building, and the work is slated to be done all in the summer. So for folks to want to know what's, what, we want to publish this, we'll also put out later a middle school piece, that has minimal work being done, about a million five per building, mainly security, things like vestibules in the front for security, science rooms being redone at McCourt, so we'll publish that as well. But I wanted folks to have just a sense of what is happening in what year. So that's, that's the purpose of the chart. So, Madam Chair, that's all I have. Happy to take any questions on this chart.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you. Just one question, does this correlate to the school's start times as well for several years, then? If we're going to have Garvin and then BF Norton, because they're both going to be high-bussing much more time?
You're way ahead of me. I haven't even got that done yet, but we just put out, I would imagine, yes, if Garvin's a challenge, imagine getting BF up here, right? So yes, I would expect more creative bussing times to facilitate BF being our third guest and Ashton being our, our fourth guest. Yes.
There aren't any other questions? Thank you for your very helpful superintendent's report. The next item on the agenda is reports of standing committees, starting with the Fiscal Management Subcommittee update. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The fiscal subcommittee met this evening. We had no payment of bills. Mr. Pignano somewhere gave us monthly updates, well, I guess it's bimonthly updates, and he, you know, we have a very bleak financial forecast for the next three years, so I don't want to get too much into that, but we have to focus on this year's budget right now. But he gave us the heads-up that we're looking at some lean times ahead, given the current forecast. We also had, well, one of the highlights is that our food services department is absolutely having a record year, and that's largely due to increased reimbursements from the federal level and universal free lunch. And then we also have three resolutions for the committee, which will be up for approval later this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next, we have the Policy and Procedures Subcommittee update. Mr. Fiorella?
We did not meet this week, but we will be meeting in two weeks, or whatever the schedule is.
Thank you. Next, we have Achievement and Communications Subcommittee update. We also did not meet, but we will get those meetings back on the calendar, I think, starting next month. All right. And next, we have the District Health and Wellness Subcommittee update. Mrs. Rogowski?
Our next meeting is April 7.
All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is comments from the public. If there's anyone from the public who would like to make any comments, you can come up to the microphone, state your name and your address, and just know that there's a three-minute limit, and we're, we actually can't fully engage in a discussion with you. This is a comment, kind of a one-way comment to the school committee. So, all right, we have one to go.
My address is 35 Kennedy Court, that is behind the high school. So I'm actually here addressing the middle school with it. I had sent an email to everyone, thank you for those of you who responded to it. There currently, right now, for what we have figured out, there's seven fifth graders at Ashton that live behind the high school. And our biggest issue, and I do want to point out, because people keep bringing this up, it is not a north and south issue, it has nothing to do with that. Right now alone, I mean, we are closer to Cumberland Hill, this redistricted, back when Full Day K came about, I grew up on New Clark Road, I went to Cumberland Hill. Coming from Ashton every day, my daughter right now gets home between 4:10 and 4:15. It has been a struggle every year with this. I had spoke about the bussing back when, I think it was in second grade, when we had issues, and she was getting home at 4:30. McCourt is much further. You're going down Mendon Road where you can't get down, you have the red lights, there is so many issues with that, and it is much further than Ashton is, as it is. They're, being on the bus for so long, they, like, someone had said, they're going to get into trouble, there's going to be other issues with it, but the kids also have activities after school they need to get to. Right now, as it is, there's so many things they, they can't. Without traffic, we're 16 minutes to McCourt, we are six minutes to North Cumberland Middle School. So logistically, it just seems like it makes no sense. I know they talk about Cumberland Hill and Community going to North, we technically live in the Cumberland Hill area, even though we are at Ashton right now. Love Ashton and everything else, and yes, it's tough that Ashton has always split from north and south, but the further you're pushing over, it just needs to be logistically figured out. I know someone up there also commented that when you're coming to, like, the Bear Hill area and all over there, they're, they have a direct route, Bear Hill, the High Street. They don't have to deal with all this Mendon Road traffic, the issue, the light at 116, or taking the highway and trying to get through the nightmare of the rotary that's over there as well. So that needs to be thought about with any of that. The issue I know they talked about, too, North Cumberland Middle School, the principal had brought it up, about, you know, another teacher and talking about different subjects. I don't know, since in other districts it's different, I'm actually a sixth-grade teacher in another district in Rhode Island, and I'm elementary certified, one through six. We have been there since the overcrowding in that district. Every one of us sixth-grade teachers are elementary certified. The district does our preference sheets, we get to choose each year by seniority what we are teaching. There are years they have said to us, hey, you're a three-person team. Every one of you teaches social studies, someone else is also adding on math, someone does ELA, someone does science. So I would think if it's allowed in other districts, it is also something that you can look into if there are other requirements, that you can have an elementary teacher teach sixth grade in the middle school, since other districts are doing that. I've done that for nine years now. So there are things to look at. I just am more concerned with the bussing. It, it's just, it's a huge issue with it, it's an anxiety thing for a lot of kids, too.
I'm sorry, you've run out of time.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Tamika Sulya, I live at Plantation Drive, also behind the high school. I won't repeat everything that she just said, it is also in my email to you guys, so you have discussed it, and she brought it up, but I will pick up on the bussing. We have had nothing but problems with Durham, especially in our neighborhood. Every single year, September and October, we are calling the Superintendent's Office, Durham, they have to change our route, they have to change our bus driver, they take away stops, they don't put up stops, it's a mess. We should be able to have faith that our kids are going to get home at a decent time in general, let alone from across town. As stated, we are six-ish minutes from North Cumberland Middle School, and we are 18 to 19 minutes from McCourt. No traffic, no bus stops, not the busiest time in town, in town. It, it starts our kids off at a disadvantage the second that they walk out to the bus stop. Not everybody can pick up and drop their kids off, as some of us have chosen to do, because the bussing has been so bad from our-- because the bussing has been so bad from our current elementary school. Again, we can travel six minutes to Cumberland Hill, we travel 13 minutes to Ashton. I love Ashton, it has nothing to do with that, but our kids are already sent to a school further away than their home school. And now for them to have to do it through the middle school also, and the time is even worse. And again, we all hear how horrible the bussing is for middle schoolers, unfortunately, it will cause more issues for bullying and all of that on the bussing. When looking at the map, we have looked up addresses that show right off Diamond Hill, as stated, because it's a street shot, almost exactly north of our street, and they are, yes, mile-wise further, time-wise, one, two, three minutes longer. We are 12 minutes longer minimum. And it's not fair to our students. Has, again, nothing to do with McCourt, I have actually heard phenomenal things about the principal there. My husband has had to deal with different things for McCourt, and I've heard great things about the staff there. I have no preference as far as teach, what, teaching for the schools, but it is not fair to the students to have to travel when they already travel this far for elementary school. And other people have brought up, oh, it's a small town, they have to travel for high school, it is the only high school in town, it is different. We have two middle schools, and we are closer by a lot to one than we are the other. And when you look at the map, there are sections that are closer, that make more sense. Bussing-wise, you see a way in and out that will loop right back to McCourt. Just because we live in a loop, it doesn't mean that it's better for us, we are the furthest loop for them to go to. That's it. Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, we will move to new business. The first item on the agenda is discussion and a vote on the 2022-2023 school calendar. We have four options in front of us, we reviewed these options at the last meeting. I'm not sure, Dr. Thornton, if any of these options have changed?
No, just, I know last meeting, I think Ms. Rogalski might have had what I would call it option E, but that was on March 15, but otherwise, no, this is still what we have for you. I recommended last meeting B to you, so you can take the recommendation, you can approve it, reject it, modify it, but that's my take to you.
Just, just one quick question, last time you mentioned that the actual end date will be one day earlier, is that now reflected on what we have, or is that still?
No, we have not made the change to this, but that would be the case, yes.
Okay. Mr. Collins?
So I actually got the polling, so it looks like even though it's, it's not a great sample, 59% of the teachers, not, you know, of the many stakeholders in this, the teachers are saying 59% would prefer one of the options that have February vacation. So in looking a little bit deeper, though, you know, we have something that kind of falls the statewide calendar. Under the statewide calendar, there is a recommendation from RIDE, and it says here, there's a third bullet point, I can send this to people, it says alignment of vacation weeks, which provide consistency for families and staff. So, you know, there are many teachers who have children of their own, yeah, I have that in front of us, yeah, so there are many teachers that have children of their own. So I'm not opposed to the idea, per se, of getting rid of February vacation if everybody else gets rid of February vacation, whereas I think Cumberland might be unilaterally the only district that has February vacation, if they go with option, the superintendent's recommendation, will be the only one. So, you know, I support February vacation, I've always supported, I think people need a break, it's a tradition, it's not like we're doing anything reinventing the wheel. I think getting rid of February vacation would be reinventing the wheel. And I think people do need a break, and, you know, we, the only option would be to get rid of it and have it at the end of the year, but I think, I don't know, I'm, I don't know anybody that I've spoken to this year in particular that didn't need February vacation this year, or feel that they had their batteries a little recharged. So I plan on supporting the option A, because I was also looking at option A and C. So I support obviously February vacation, but then I look at the only variance would be the professional day. So in theory, I'd like to have PD days pressed up against the, the front of the year, front-loaded, so it doesn't impact families. But I do like option A simply because March 15, there's already PD days built into the calendar, but if we have one in March, what happens is we can, the faculty and administration can get together and talk about anything that arises, perhaps there's a strategy going into RIDE CAS, it'll give them one more PD day where they can regroup and maybe assess what they've been working on this year. So I plan on supporting option A, and I, I know if anybody else, I will eventually make a motion to support option A, but not right just yet, a lot of other people talk.
Something else that I think is different about the state calendar this year than years past is April vacation, and I'm not going to throw it into the mix, but April vacation, I think traditionally in Massachusetts and in Rhode Island, has been the third week in April for as long as I can remember, and in this state calendar, it's the second week in April?
Right, the state went the second, we actually polled superintendents and 22 soup's responded, 20 of them went with a ride one, even though it was different. I want to say Smithfield and West Smithfield went the third one, third week.
Yeah, and I know, I think a lot of the Massachusetts schools are the third week in April, so that is another. Yeah. But we, but in Rhode Island, we've always been the third week in April. I mean, and I would also just add about February vacation, I mean, there were several years we did not have February vacation here, so it's not, if we don't have a February vacation, we're not reinventing the will. We got February vacation back during the COVID years, during the RIDE state calendar, but before that, we did not have February vacation. Other comments? Mr. Demonicke?
I, like Mr. Collins, have heard from people in regards to the calendar options. We went back to having February vacation, and I think it does give many people time to recharge and get over the sicknesses that they may have. We don't know what's going to happen with this new Omnicron COVID situation, and I, like Mr. Collins, would support this year going to option A as well. Thank you.
Mrs. Feather? Oh, sorry, Ms. Smith?
So, yeah, I just wanted to make a, another point about the February vacation piece and the, and the last day. It can be said that, you know, the last day of school would be pushed out significantly if you have a February vacation, and I think the ideal, in my opinion, would have been if we could have started a week earlier. You know, if we could have started a week earlier, it wouldn't have mattered, you know, we'd be talking about the same end date this year and probably for the next foreseeable years because of school construction, we cannot start earlier. And I'm looking at some of the calendars, and the differences between the last day, the proposed last day, when you have a February vacation versus not having, is really just a matter of two days, two school days, it's just over a weekend. So I don't think it's that much to, to ask to have a February vacation.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too support having the February vacation, just because we do have a lot of that crossover between districts, and of course, even with the high school, we have our pathway courses where students are coming from other places, and families may have different vacations with their other children. So I think it just makes more sense to put it back in for those few extra days. The one I did want to point out, though, is while I appreciate what's being said with option A about the March 15 professional day, I'd much prefer to see those professional days happen like we have in option C, which is on that September 13, that primary day, where our schools would have already been closed. And if we're using it as a professional day, we don't have to go through this, who's having distance learning, who's not, who's getting assignments and has, and who's not. There, there are strictly professional days that are happening when we know no students are going to be there. We have front-loaded the two, and, you know, why aren't we just loading that other one? And if we're going to load it, then why don't we backload it towards the end of June to do something with the teachers then, for, you know, for their professional day? I just think it causes too many arguments and disagreements against parents and who have children at different schools. Professional days, some of them have to do work and some don't, so we, we need to align that.
Mr. Demonicke?
I would just like to point out that, you know, having professional development on the primary election day, I don't know how it's going to work, because many of our schools are used for polling places in town, and do we want to have teachers in the building with the polling places?
In terms of that, people typically are polling in the gym areas and cafes, so the PD typically would be in other locations, so it, it, it wouldn't be a, a problem to have our adults in the building. I think it's not about having kids in the building if people were polling, but the adults certainly could find space, I think, in the, in the other spaces.
Ms. Rogalski?
First, let me say I love February vacation. I grew up with February vacation, we called it midwinter break. We had midwinter break because in Syracuse, winter went through Mother's Day, and then we had spring break. Normally, I would be a fan of it here. However, with the school not starting until after Labor Day, the end dates are June 21st or June 22nd for option A or option C. Two snow days, we had three this year, I believe, two snow days next year takes us to the last week in June, puts us out at June 26th possibly. Three snow days, June 27th, I mean, we're almost into July, that is crazy. So for that reason, I fully support option B without February break. I don't think I'm going to take that vote, because somebody seemed to be in favor of option A, but I just, keeping kids in school through the last week of June, I grew up with that, it's, it's awful, and it's, it's hot, it is miserable, families want to start the vacations, southern schools have been out for over a month at that point, it's just, it's a lot. So I fully support option B.
Yeah, I think option B is actually a nice compromise, because you actually get two days out of the February vacation week, which is what we did for many years before the statewide calendar. But any other comments?
Madam Chair, we'll see, I guess, operation, procedurally, this is going to be difficult because we're voting on four things. So what I'm going to do is, I would say that Mrs., Ms. Smith makes a compelling argument for option C regarding the fact that the schools will already be closed to students because of the primary election day. So I will make a motion to approve option C for the 2022-23 school calendar.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve option C. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Ms. Smith. Any discussion? Mrs. Feather?
Just by way of compromise, I'm just wondering whether or not there is a potential, I know that distance learning is not a potential with, you know, just because of disparities and, and whatnot, I'm wondering whether or not there is a potential to maybe have like take-home packets or something like that to prepare against snow days, because I too am a fan of just, of, of option C, but I also want to, I also want to respect.
Okay.
And I would just add to my, my motion, I guess, if we're discussing right now. So I motion for option C, because we have four options to choose from, so if this gets approved, we move on to the next agenda item.
Correct.
If it dies, then somebody's going, then I will immediately option for A, and we'll see where that goes.
Okay.
And then, that way, we're not, I'm just saving, Mr., we can, we don't have to charge Mr. Adams tonight, I'll take care of it, so.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for option C. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. Nay.
It passes four to three. Opposed is Mr. Fiorello, the chairperson, and Mrs. Rogalski. So option C passes in a split vote.
No, I'm good, thank you.
The next, the next item on the agenda is a vote on grievance 2021-2022-11. This was discussed and presented in the executive session tonight, so simply, this is not a discussion, this is simply a vote to either approve or deny the grievance.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to deny the grievance.
Mr. Fiorello makes a motion to deny the grievance. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Smith. I guess we go straight to the vote. All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
The grievance is denied in a five to two vote with Mr. Collins and Mr. Demonicke voting nay. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is discussion and a vote to approve homeschool instruction requests for the 2021-2022 school year.
We have none, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is discussion and a vote to approve resolutions. Mr. Collins?
Good evening, Madam Chair, I have three resolutions. I would ask Mr. Pignano if you, you could just talk a little bit about the, the first one, if you don't mind. SCPI-03-2022-26, a resolution authorizing empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve E&amp;E Systems Incorporated of Canton, Massachusetts to replace the high school boilers with funds provided through a lease issued by the town in an amount not to exceed $1,250, $250,000. This is coming with funds made available with the town master lease. The only question I had is just, I said 1,250,000. Yeah.
We said 1,000.
All right. Nobody likes to know what all marks. All right, so, no, but the only thing, the only thing I had questioned is just, I wasn't sure, I was looking at my notes, just the dire condition of our boilers and what was told regarding, you know, the necessity for that to, for these things to be replaced as soon as possible.
Yeah, well, the boilers are, the boilers are at a point where they need to be replaced. We've been told by the people who service the boilers that they can no longer get pots, that sort of thing. We've, we've been able to put Band-Aids on them over the last couple of years at different times to keep them running, it, it's time to replace them. The, the beauty of this project is that the state will pay 53% of this cost of this project. So the million, $200,000, the state's going to pay close to $700,000 of the costs, it's a, has to be, has to be done, it really does. You get $700,000 towards a project that you're going to have to do eventually, so we have an authority to do this with, with the state, because we applied to do this work. Back in 2017, you have five years to do the work, so the, the authority ends this June. So if we get, if we get this approved, the town's going to put it on their agenda next council meeting, I think, which might be next Wednesday, and we should be able to get this done in time for September 30th and receive the 53%. We have to have the project done by September 30th.
All right, appreciate it, because I, I was looking at my notes and I was like, I'm going to try to articulate this, but I figure you'd be able to do it better. So this resolution passed, fiscal subcommittee three to zero, and I would move full, passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-03-2022-26. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Demonicke, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes seven to zero.
Next is SCPI-03-2022-27, a resolution empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve a payment to H.V. Collins Company of Providence, Rhode Island, for the February 2022 invoice, payment number seven, for J.J. McLaughlin, Cumberland Hill Elementary School, in an amount not to exceed $564,122. This is coming out of the bond, this passed fiscal subcommittee three to zero, and I would move the passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-03-2022-27. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Demonicke, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes seven to zero.
And finally is SCPR-03-2022-28, a resolution empowering the school committee, Cumberland School Committee, to approve a payment to H.V. Collins Company of Providence, Rhode Island, for the February 2022 invoice, payment number eight, for the high school swing space in an amount not to exceed $41,946. This passed fiscal subcommittee three to zero, and I would move passage.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-03-2022-28. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Demonicke, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next item, discussion and a vote to approve payment of bills?
We have no payment of the bills this evening.
Excellent. Next item on the agenda is school committee comments, school liaison reports. Any comments from the school committee? Mrs. Feather?
I, I know you mentioned it, I know you mentioned it earlier, Madam Chair, but I just wanted to also mention the variety show, because we attended the first night, my daughter and I attended the first night, and then we loved it so much that we actually attended the second night, so, and we brought more family members the second So, and we brought more family members the second night, because it was so amazing. So kudos to all of those, those folks who put it on. And we have some really, really talented kids here. It's amazing. And the other thing is that I just wanted to thank everyone who's worked so hard to give our kids, you know, the, the dances and the proms and all of that this year. I know that we've gone through, and, and many years have gone through several, several hardships of not having any of those, and it's really nice to see. So thank you.
Any other comments?
I do.
Mr. Collins?
Go Friars.
Any other comments? All right. Uh, the next item is a vote to go into executive session.
I'll say it, Madam Chair.